The Monday, March 28th, 2022 regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called a order at 5:30 PM. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Hughes. Please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, as always, we thank you for your many blessings, for your divine intervention in our lives, and we just pray, Father, that you would fill us with your Spirit, that you would guide us and direct us in all things, that everything that we do, say, or even think, Father, would be glorifying to you, for it's all about you. And we just pray, Father, for our city, that you would guide and direct our leaders tonight as they conduct the business of the city. And, Father, we have a city here, Father, that we can all be proud of, and that, Father, we work together, and we just thank you, Father, for all that you've done, for asking in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B is the citizens forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, council members, or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please state your name and an address for the record.
My name is Carrie Daniel. I live at 111 Lamar Avenue. I have two businesses downtown, and I live downtown. And I just wanted to address the council, I believe, about the lighting in downtown, the issues. I believe there was some positive talk about it, and that there was talk of it being on a future agenda item. I didn't see it today, so I just wanted to encourage the council to still continue to be mindful of that lighting issue downtown, and also to address about the downtown traffic study that the city is working with TechDOT for, the 90-day study for the stop signs, and to say that as a resident and a business owner downtown, I hope that the city council is very supportive of that report. Personally, I've heard a lot of good feedback, and a lot of people who did not think they liked it have been enjoying it, and so I just really would like to ask y'all to please be supportive of that study as it wraps up and the next step of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Daniel. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, the citizens forum is now closed. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Anyone wishing to remove an item for discussion? I'm going to remove item number 11, please, just for discussion, or really just to make you aware of it. I know there's a lot of backup and you sometimes don't get to the consent agenda. Item number 11 is dealing with the annual $150,000 grant that TechDOT Aviation gives to the city that we can bank for four years, amounting to $600,000. But in order to get that money and keep it, we have to have a plan, and in 2017, that did not happen. Mr. Path, would you like to give any more background on that?
That's basically right there.
Okay. And let me make it clear that this is not the fault of any staff that we have now. The staff that this happened under is gone, and with our own airport manager now, I believe that we will be in compliance. We have been able to bank 2018, 19, 20, and 21, so that is going towards some of the projects that it was planned for. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Well, giving these funds back to TechDOT will allow them to remain in Texas, right, instead of going national, so that's a good thing.
Right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Is there a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries six one. Item number 17, on the regular agenda. A, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Lori Murphy on behalf of Turned Property Investments LLC to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan from low-density residential, LDR, on Lot 4, and retail R on lots 5, 6, and 7, to medium-density residential, MDR, in the City of Paris, Block 189. Mr. Mack, do you have a presentation, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of city council. You have before you this evening, items 17A, B, and C. They are all related to the same property. Before you on the screen right now, for the purposes of presentation, what I'd like to do is make a presentation on 17A, have you all take action, make a presentation 17B, have you all take action, and then finally C the same way. We just grouped it this way, so you're able to see that they're all related to the same property, although they are all separate actions. So the request first before you is to amend the future land use map. As you'll see on this slide, the property in question is guided for low-density residential, and the request is to construct apartments on the property. Therefore, in order to rezone this property to accommodate that, we have to take forth simultaneous requests to both amend the land use plan, which is a minor amendment to the city's comprehensive plan as an ordinance, as well as the subsequent actions for the rezonings. So the first request before you is to re-guide this property from low-density residential to medium-density residential. With regard to the public hearing before the planning commission, they did recommend approval of this item for the council. There was some inputs received. A landowner to the south on Bonham Street expressed opposition. They did not attend the hearing. They did cite some reasoning for that, but it did not meet with concern from the planning commission. So again, the recommendation from the planning commission and the city staff to the council is for approval on the amendment to the future land use map.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. I'll now open the public hearing and ask that anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bill Barters, B-A-R-T-E-R-S, and I live at 2905 Clarksville Street in Paris, Texas. I'm actually the manager of the Garden Apartments, and I will be managing these properties if they're built. The object is to build middle-class housing for our workers in Paris, our restaurant workers and people like that. We're driving them out of Paris right now. The prices have gotten ridiculous. All these new duplexes are going for 1,200 to 1,500. We're willing to save about $1,000 for two-bedroom apartments, which is a fair price. I get 900 at the Garden Apartments right now, and they'll be going up too. So the object is to support our community and support the people that work inside our community. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak for or in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion or questions of Mr. Mack?
We're only amending the future use here. We're actually not changing the zoning on this particular property, correct?
We will change it on item 17B. That's the next action.
So has...
We're taking it in a logical progression.
Okay. And this has been in front of planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
And they approved it?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right. I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion on 17A as written to change the city's comprehensive plan as written on letter A of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Reginald Hughes, we appreciate that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries six one. Item B, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Lori Murphy on behalf of Turned Property Investments LLC for a change in zoning from a commercial district C to a multiple-family district number two, MF2, in the City of Paris, Block 189, lots 5, 6, and 7, located at 1306 Bonham Street, LCAD 17067. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. The request for you this evening is two zoning actions. This is the first of two. The red property to the west of the apartments that you see facing on Bonham Street is currently zoned commercial. The request, as a part of the site plan that we are working with on this project, will involve the construction of a new parking lot on the west side of this structure, hence an expansion of the apartment project. That parking is necessary to accommodate both the addition plus the convenience of added additional parking for the existing apartments that are currently constructed. Under our ordinance changes that occurred within the last couple of years, apartments are no longer permitted use in the commercial district. Therefore, this request is to amend the zoning of this property to be rezoned to apartments to MF2, so that it would be consistent with the permitted uses in the zoning district. Planning zoning also held a public hearing on this and recommends approval to the city council, along with the city staff's recommendation, to accommodate this project.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. I ask anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion.
No.
All right. Seeing no discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the change of zoning from commercial to MF2 in the City of Paris, Block 189, lots 5, 6, 7, located at 1306 Bonham Street, as written in letter B, 17, letter B in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. Second. Ms. Knox, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six one. Item number C, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Lori Murphy on behalf of Turned Property Investments LLC for a change in zoning from a one-family dwelling district number two to a multiple-family district number two in the City of Paris, Block 189, Lot 4, located at 35 Northwest 13th Street, LCAD 17066. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. This is the third action. This won't be the final action on this particular project. There are a number of steps that are still involved after this, including both a platting process, as well as potential vacation of public right-of-way in order to get to the point where we can actually permit a structure. That will be coming forth at a future meeting for the council, as well as the planning commission, but we're completing the land use steps first. This is the third action in the step of three steps this night, rezoning this property from SF2 to MF2 to permit the apartment construction. This parcel actually fronts on 13th Street. Just as an FYI, the site plan draft layout would orientate that structure not to 13th Street, but rather toward Bonham, allowing for access into the complex. It looked more or less like a horseshoe of buildings, all facing Bonham. With that understanding, planning commission again held a public hearing and is recommending, along with staff, the approval of the rezoning of this property from SF2 to MF2.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Any discussion? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve item C, Lori Murphy on behalf of Turned Property Investments LLC, as written.
Thank you, Mr. Savage.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Mayor's motion carries six one. Item number 18A, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Jeremy Berry to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan from low-density residential, LDR, to medium-density residential, MDR, on property located at 912 East Price Street. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. This item comes to you this evening as a result of enforcement action that the city has conducted against this property. The property was basically guided for low-density residential. It was zoned for duplex. There was a duplex constructed there. We received a complaint of the tenant in the property. We went out and discovered that they're actually living in a quadruplex that was converted without permits and approvals by the city. The property has subsequently changed hands and ownership, and the new owner is attempting to rectify the code issues with this property, and we indicated that it would need to be rezoned to 4F or MF1 at least, those two districts, in order to legitimize the opportunity to obtain a permit still, to approve the conversion from a two-family to a fourplex. We can't issue that permit unless the zoning is changed. So in order to change the zoning, we have property here guided for low-density residential, and what we are entertaining this evening, first of three items related to the subject under 18A, is the changing of the future land use map upon the request of the applicant from low-density residential to medium-density residential. This item was held as a public hearing before the planning zoning commission. We did receive some inputs and testimony objecting to the change. The planning commission did, however, conduct the hearing and felt that based on changing conditions in this area and improvements that are proposed, both by the subject property and looking to the future for potential growth and development in this area, that it was appropriate to re-guide the property from low-density to medium-density residential. Staff did recommend approval as well to the council on this item and would recommend that you approve this change in the future land use map this evening.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing and ask anyone that wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Any discussion?
So the people that objected to this, I mean, you can't do anything about what was built illegally, you know, years ago or whatever, so they were objecting more so to the potential of more complexes like that being built, right? You know, opening up, opening the doors for more.
My understanding is that the objection was to the conversion of a duplex to a fourplex here and the operation and management of the property. I believe some of those concerns may dissipate with the new ownership, but we can't ascertain that for sure, but it was my sense that that was the objection and not the rest of the property surrounding it, which we will entertain under item 18C.
I think my question is, going from a duplex to a quadruplex, are these very, very tiny? How did they handle additional bathrooms and kitchens? Because I assume there were two, and now there's four bathrooms, four kitchens?
That's correct. They do have to have all of those basic services for each dwelling unit in order to occupy it as a structure. We've addressed some code issues up front that were a result of the complaint that came in first to the fire department. Those involve concerns over potential gas leak issues and electrical. The gas leak issue was solved. It was an appliance that needed to be addressed, and the electrical issues were addressed based on follow-up with our electric code inspector and some changes that the owner made to the outlets. There are still further issues that will have to be addressed on separation between individual dwelling units that have not been addressed yet, and that has to do with the adjacent units from the common walls between all four of the units. So yes, it's possible to provide all of those services.
Have, for instance, has our fire marshal been in there to inspect?
The fire marshal will review the plans with the building official and will need to address those code requirements as a part of the building permit going forward. They can't make that application, though, until the zoning is changed. So this was staff's attempt to negotiate the violation of the illegal conversion, obviously leaving part of it as a policy decision to the council. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval, and staff is also recommending approval of this request.
Okay. So we really don't have much choice because it's illegal as it is right now.
The question before the council is re-guiding the land use map and the rezoning, which will be on 18B, the next item.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I think most amend the future land use map of comprehensive plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential on property located at 912 East Price Street.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries six one. Item 18B, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Jeremy Berry for a change in zoning from a two-family dwelling district 2F to a multiple family dwelling district number one, MF1, in the City of Paris, Block 31, Lot 1, located at 912 East Price Street, LCAD 13787. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. This request will enable the property to be rezoned and hence move forward with the request for the building permit to allow the conversion from the duplex to a fourplex. Again, planning commission reviewed this, and city staff and the planning commission are recommending your approval of this change this evening from two-family or our duplex zoning district to MF1.
All right. I will now open the public hearing and ask that anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item, come forward now. Seeing none, public forum is closed. Any discussion? I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
A second, and I'll try to get the count right this time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero.
Yes.
Item 18C, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the City of Paris to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential on property located at 932 East Price, LCAD 13788, 921 East Houston, LCAD 13795, and 939 East Houston, LCAD 13794. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. This final action, C, associated with the first two actions are to create a contiguous land use category district guided area from low-density residential to medium-density residential, such that we are not isolating the change that was made in the land use map as a singular parcel. These remaining three parcels were initiated by the city in order to create a cohesive district for the future land use map, whereby we legitimize and justify the change in zoning for the property that you just approved previously on the last agenda item. Staff is not recommending at this time that we rezone the properties. We don't have any proposals to change the use of either the vacant or the built properties in this particular case, but it does allow us to create guidance for the future of this block so that it does have the ability to move toward higher density as guided to the east, funting up along, I forget, I think that'd be 10th Street, and then at such time in the future, somebody wants to come in and propose new construction at a higher density, they would first start with rezoning, but it would be guided properly so that we're, you know, we're setting the stage for future growth and enhanced density in this location. This was held as a public hearing. The planning commission struggled with this one on the basis that they felt that it ought not to be initiated by the city. In this case, I, as staff, am in disagreement with the planning commission's recommendation to be brought before the council this evening. I am recommending that the land use map be changed in order to execute good planning practice in this case. So there's a split recommendation before the council on the re-guiding of these three properties that were initiated by the city staff on this, and as such, would recommend that you approve this this evening.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing and ask that anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item, do so. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion?
I have, Madam Mayor, one more point. As a result of the negative recommendation from the P and Z on this, it is required that we have a three-fourths, is it...
This is the future land use map, right?
Right, but it's still the ordinance?
Read your own memo. No, because this is not a recommendation for denial on an actual rezoning, because it is a recommendation for denial on the future land use map, a simple majority will approve this. You don't have to have the three-quarters vote.
Thank you. I didn't know if the court was still out on that question. Fair enough.
Well, I'm going to go with staff recommendation because Mr. Mack just used the phrase, best planning practices. He has a master's degree in that, and I believe he's the expert. And it's, as you just said, if I can repeat that, it's not a zoning change, it's for the future land use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So when a development is brought forward, then you would request or not a zoning change? Is that correct?
And that would be on behalf of the applicant or the property owner itself.
Any other discussion, Ms. Knox?
I don't understand why the...
I don't understand why the, why would planning and zoning turn this down? I mean, why would they vote to deny this change?
My best understanding of the discussion was the fact that they didn't feel it was the city's position to initiate the change, which is not correct. I mean, we, the city is the writer and adopter of the comprehensive plan. The city has the right to update its plan at any time it so chooses. It just so happens that this is a case initiated by an applicant. When that occurs, I look at the surrounding property and use discretion. If something like that makes sense, then we will initiate that change, the hearings, and so forth. And we've done, and we've done this on a number of cases in the past year.
Well, I understand that with regard to the future land use and, you know, that the city will do that in, as far as planning purposes goes, but I'm trying to reconcile why planning and zoning would be against it, number one. And number two, what about all the surrounding areas? You've only got three lots in here that are, that you're planning for, is next door to it, was future land use the same as these three lots in the middle of a block?
This, this best shows that everything, well, it sort of shows that everything from the subject property plus the three adjoining are all guided low-density. Everything along 10th Street is guided for commercial, future commercial use. So we didn't want to change the commercial guiding. What we wanted to do was address the remaining portion of the block so that the property at 912, as you see on the screen, that's shown as, as yellow low-density would match with the surrounding adjacent properties.
So the other adjacent properties are all zoned, and these three were the ones that were not zoned, or not zoned? I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word. Excuse me. So designated.
Guided.
Guided, yes. The other properties are all guided except for these three, and you're trying to bring these three into the surrounding areas? Is that correct?
A more cohesive land use designation for all of the adjoining properties.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just so thick on this stuff. I just, I'm learning, I'm trying really hard to learn.
I'm comfortable with changing the future use map if it changes. We knew there were holes in it in places a couple of years ago when they brought it to us, and we knew that it would be some changes and stuff. As long as we're changing the future use, I'm fine with that. And then they still have to go get rezoned, and then if they're gonna, obviously, if they want to change it, they can, or they can leave it the way they are. Is my understanding correct?
That's correct, sir.
Any other discussion or questions? All right. I'll hear a motion to approve.
So moved on item 18C as written.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero. Item number 19, discuss, conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the city of Paris for a change in zoning from a dual zoning commercial and light industrial district, C and LI, to a commercial district, C in the RS Enterprises Edition, block A, lots one through four, and the city of Paris, block 313, lots 2C, 2D, PT 3 and PT 4, 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, pleased to report that there's only one agenda item on this subject. There's no A, B, and C.
Great.
To make this a little bit more, less complicated to understand, the, on the screen before you, you see several parcels, all with this gray color. In my nearly four-decade career of being a planner, I've never seen a zoning district created that accommodates two separate zoning districts within the ordinance as a designation for all of these properties. Staff initiated this change on the basis that we received an inquiry for property that's changing hands up here along Lamar and got to looking at this, and it was based on an ordinance that was approved back in the eighties. There was not a lot of development. This afforded maximum flexibility, apparently, why the city council approved this zoning to a dual district. We don't have standards in our ordinance that apply to a dual district, district, and so we would have to essentially make it up as we go to figure out how to apply things like setbacks and lot sizes, lot width, and parking require, you know, this type of stuff. And so we brought this to the planning commission. We did receive some inputs, both in favor and in objection. The objection was received by the largest property owner, right here in the center, for existing buildings that are on this, that are part of the, excuse me here, adjoining use to the west from this car dealership. It's being used for inventory warehousing of automotive parts and so forth with the business. Certainly a use that is permitted as a part of the commercial district change that was proposed. However, based on the objections to the change in zoning, the planning commission felt it appropriate to recommend the denial of the, of the application. Initially, my sense, following that input from the planning and zoning commission, was to recommend that this item be withdrawn from, from the agenda this evening. We have, however, included a ordinance should the council choose to proceed with the approval tonight of changing from a combination of commercial and light industrial to commercial to create a cohesive commercial zoning district in these locations. There are some fairly heavy, intense industrial uses that would not be appropriate adjacent to the surrounding commercial properties, commercial, retail. But nonetheless, again, on the basis that planning commission felt it not appropriate for the city to initiate these changes without the request by the landowners, they chose to not recommend approval of this and subsequently recommended that it be denied to the city council. Staff is not recommending a position contrary to the P and Z recommendation. We were just merely trying to clean up the zoning map in this case. It is guided for commercial development in the future, not for industry, so the zoning change would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as a result, though, based on the discrepancy between the staff recommendation and the P and Z recommendation to a council, I would recommend that you withdraw, allow the application this evening to be withdrawn. Although, the reason is before you is because it is scheduled as a public hearing, and we are obligated to conduct a hearing as a result.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. I'll now open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion? Me too.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, so you're saying that this is commercial and industrial right now, zoned, split, split use, right?
It's, the districts literally tie a little, both commercial and light industrial.
I think you alluded that a commercial enterprise is using it?
Correct.
Okay. Is an industrial enterprise using it as well?
No.
No. And you want to make it commercial?
The objection from the landowner using the, the largest landowner in the subject property, in this location right here, was concerned that it would reduce the maximum amount of flexibility for future use of the property. And as a result, I think that that was the predominant input that the P and Z received and chose to recommend denial of the change as a result.
I'm not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, if you look at all the yellow and the pink, that's my residential district. I mean, I don't live there, but that's in my district. And I don't think those people want light industrial. Can you give us some of the examples of what kind of uses would be allowable under light industrial?
Concrete or asphalt batch plant, heavy, heavy manufacturing type uses like we would see in our industrial park.
One, one thing to say on this, too, and granted, we could give them that CO, one grave concern that if you were to go in a batch plant, asphalt batch plant, any of those types of things, TCEQ regulates air permits for anything light industrial that has any kind of output. They would not, obviously, with that much residential in that general vicinity. I think the biggest issue we need to look at is the landowner did not request the zoning change. The landowner purchased the property. We go back to when Smallwood Construction was here with the multifamily, they bought a piece of land because it was zoned multifamily, and some of the neighbors just said, I don't want multifamily. Well, I agree, I probably wouldn't either, but we can't go grab somebody's land and tell them what they can and can't do with it. That's, that's past our, I mean, we can, we open up a huge can of worms, in my opinion, as a council, and going against our planning and zoning and a legal standpoint because the zoning has been set, whether we want it there or not. It was set back in 1985. Now, granted, if somebody wants to change to commercial in the Lamar, or that property wants to change as commercial and they file that, I'm all about it. But we, we can't, I don't even know how legally we're even doing some of these, these requests because they're not requesting it. They're denying it, not wanting it. They bought the property in the, whether they're using it for commercial or they're using it for light industrial. But to go get air permits for a batch plant, or air permits for a whatever, a soup factory, those kinds of things are, are strategic and extremely hard to get in residential and highly capacity areas. That's why you see a lot of these plants with a lot of land around them. They're not going to let, that will never happen. But it, it's a scare tactic, and I understand it, and it is something to think about. But as far as that thing becoming a toxic plume and smoke, loud, there's noise ordinances within the city that they can't just go put in whatever they want to there. There's other rules and regulations that they would have to follow, but I'm, as a, as a vote of caution, I totally disagree with taking anybody's stuff without them applying. Now, future use plan map, I'm all about, but we're going to take somebody's land and just say, no, you, you paid X for it? No, it's, it's commercial now. That changes the value of that property. And as an appraiser, it drastically changes the value. And that opens up a can, that opens up a, in a class action lawsuit. That's what it does, if we decide to do that.
So that, the, the landowner that owns the most land, you're not talking about somebody that owns the most land in the area. You're talking about in that particular plot, that particular area that's engraved, the majority landowner, he's the one that objects, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I, I agree with Clayton on that, just out of consistency. You know, we, we made a big deal out of that before, of grabbing somebody's land and making a, a change after they've bought it, and just out of consistency, we, we should, you know, keep that same energy.
Can he use the property after it's, if it, if it received a zoning change? Can he use it in the same way he's using it right now?
Most definitely. The question was raised about what uses the light industrial district permits. This is our, our zoning matrix that shows the types of uses, both permitted and special use are shown here. Other thing we would typically look at through special uses, which comes through public hearings, these would be also permitted uses in light industrial district, potentially as more intensive than the commercial district. For the most part, all of these uses are listed the same for commercial or light industrial. They're, they're either permitted by right, or they're a specific use permit. Livestock auction center, both the same, would have to go through a hearing process in commercial as well as in light industrial. Otherwise, if, in this case, yeah, so mostly, you know, the districts mirror one another for these uses, but on the heavier side, which would be the industrial uses, that's the difference, as, as we see right here. So a specific use permit for asphalt paving or batching plant, concrete batching plant, specific use, sand and gravel or stone extraction operations, specific use, head shops, those wound up in industrial districts. I'm not sure how that happened, but apparently that's where they belong.
Is there enough room over there for a manufacturing company back there? A plant? I mean, as far as...
That's what that, that's what that, that used to be.
Used to be. Wintermuth?
Oh, Wintermuth.
So it was a light manufacturing plant. The property was purchased in the bin warehouse the last several years because there's not been a need for a small manufacturing type facility there. And also, too, we go back to the permitting process, to the air quality. That, that's, I, I agree, you know, we, maybe one day, there's a, there's a possibility that an asphalt paving batch plant could be put back there. There's not going to be an air permit issued, know that for a fact. Again, taking somebody's land and then switching their zoning post fact, I mean, that is a slippery, slippery slope. I, I don't know how that's even legal.
If there were no objections made in the P and Z recommended approval, staff would not be recommending withdrawal of this application, hence the staff recommendation for withdrawal.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you need a, do you need a motion to withdraw it?
Yes.
I'll hear a motion.
I'll make it.
Just not?
I'll make the motion to pull this item number, is it 19? I think, yes. I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second? Mr. Savage, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. No. All right. Motion carries five one. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Five one?
Who says five one?
I voted against it.
Okay.
My constituents aren't happy. Item number 20, discuss, conduct a public hearing and act on an ordinance considering the petition of the city of Paris for a change in zoning from an agricultural District A to a one-family dwelling district number two SF2 in the A571 J Moore survey, tract three, LCAD 52907, and all of Paradise Estates Edition north of Old Clarksville Road. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. This particular item you see on the screen is the Paradise Estates Edition. It's all currently zoned agriculture. In the city's future land use map, it's all guided for single-family, low-density residential, which is currently what's there. We have a mixture in here of large lot rural style residential, parcels greater than one and a half acres. I think in my staff report, I had a number stated there, how many, I think all but five of the lots are, are less than 1.5 acres in size. This came to staff's attention from an owner in the subdivision concerned about the permitted uses of agricultural type uses on property that's currently a, lack of a better term, a rural residential character subdivision. And hence, the initiation by the city staff to bring this forward, to implement the city's comprehensive plan, to change the zoning on the properties from agricultural to SF2, single-family residential, consistent with the current use. The SF2 district would not put restrictions on any property that would be interested in further re-subdivision, nor make any of the lots non-conforming that are greater than, that are, that are, that are not greater than, than one and a half acres... non-conforming that are greater than... that are not greater than one and a half acres. Hence, the recommendation by staff to rezone to SF2 as opposed to SF1, which requires a minimum lot size of 1.5 acres. There was objection expressed during the public hearing on this. A number of the residents lived here weren't clear on understanding why the city was initiating this change. I would suggest to you that it was on the to-do list for the department. We've entertained a number of changes of zoning from agricultural to residential, and council and commissions approved a number of those, consistent with the current use of the property. This was annexed plus 20 years ago into the city. The default zoning, when it's annexed, is agricultural. Likely, it should have been changed at that time, but was not done, and is the largest reason why this was brought forward, not just because the owner in the development was concerned about future ag uses in the property. It was based on the city's comprehensive plan and whether or not we had time to move this forward. In this case, we took the initiative, conducted the hearing, had concerns, again, came from a number of the residents out here. Based on those concerns and objections, the Planning Commission, after conducting the hearing, again, recommended that we not change the zoning on this, as guided by the city's comprehensive plan. Again, more primarily on the basis of concern that the city was initiating the change as a wholesale change, as opposed to the landowners individually approaching the city to make the changes. I would suggest to you that this is definitely the city's responsibility and role, and not to require each individual property owner to come in and change their zoning, causing a spot zoning of properties, you know, on a case-by-case basis. And so, but however, again, based on the P&amp;Z recommendation here, and objections and concerns expressed by the residents in the neighborhood, staff is recommending, on that basis, that you also entertain a withdrawal of this application and leave this discussion for sometime in the future, as opposed to addressing it at this point in time. And that's pretty comprehensive background on the situation here. I think, again, from the planner's perspective, this was the right thing to do. But based on the objections and concerns, it's not the staff's intent to cause disharmony in a neighborhood that is not necessarily in unison with each other's neighbors in a development. So, again, P&amp;Z recommended denial of this request, and therefore, staff is recommending that the council accept a withdrawal of this application this evening. Again, it's scheduled as a public hearing. It needs to be conducted, and so we're conducting the hearing. And you may have further testimony this evening. I'm not sure. But that is the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. I'll now open the public hearing and ask that anyone who wishes to come forward and speak in support or opposition of this item. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Discussion?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
If it's my district?
Well, is it advantageous for people to stay agriculturally zoned as opposed to single-family zoning? Is it more advantageous tax-wise or something? I mean, why are they... why do they not want to be zoned, single-family?
According to my conversation with the appraisal district, the taxable value of property has nothing to do with the zoning whatsoever or the property. It may have something to do with the market analysis of land values from private appraisals, but not with regard to the taxing purposes. The tax value is established based on the actual use of the property. In this case, there would be no change whatsoever.
Why are the... and you said the residents are a little more... they're confused about what this is going to mean? Is that... did I understand you correctly?
There were some questions or uncertainties in their mind about what they couldn't do as a residential SF2 zoning district versus an ag district, which has a whole host of uses in an ag district that are different from that of the single-family district.
I was at this P&amp;Z meeting, and some of my constituents that live there were at the meeting. Unfortunately, right as you introduced this, I had to leave for another meeting. So, were the residents that were here, did they speak against or for the zoning change?
I would say that the tenor of the group that was here was against the changes. Several said that they weren't sure if they were for or against. They just got the notice and wondered why this was being done, showed up at the hearing, and thought it would be best if they tabled it and took more time to discuss it and better understand, or meet with staff, and better understand the zoning restrictions from ag versus the SF2 district. But again, on the basis that it was initiated by the city and not by the landowners, P&amp;Z said, "There's concerns, objections, therefore, they're recommending denial."
Further questions or discussion?
I think it goes back to the item before. I mean, I agree that it should be SF1 or two, and that should have been done twenty... whenever, probably years ago. But taking somebody's property and reclassifying it is extremely slippery slope. Again, it opens up a can of worms. It opens up a valuation difference. It opens up uses that they can and can't do. And that's been an ag district, and unfortunately, they built homes in it. But I'm not into taking over somebody's property rights. So, I might have to say that we're withdraw on my end.
I'll entertain a motion to withdraw.
I'll make a motion to withdraw the zoning change from ag district to SF2 in the LCAD 52907, Olive Paradise Estates addition.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. All those in favor of withdrawing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero. Item number 21. Discuss, conduct a public hearing, and act on an ordinance considering the petition of Bailey Assay on behalf of Val Chan for a change in zoning from a one-family dwelling District Two to a multiple-family dwelling District Number One, in the City of Paris Block 257A, Lot NP3, located at 2340 East Cherry Street, LCAD 818177. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is kind of an odd item. The request is to rezone the subject parcel right here from SF2 to MF1, consistent with actions that the city has just taken in the past year to rezone the adjoining two properties to MF1. The reason for this item being tabled by the P&amp;Z, as the recommendation is this evening, is because we have received a follow-up application from the same owner for this property. He has provided a legal description so that the boundaries would be consistent with the block to the east. There is plans for new development of housing on the site. And as a result of that, a new legal description was produced, and we want to take one action, changing the zoning. But we needed the correct legal description to make that application. So, as a result of that, we're just recommending that this either be tabled or just denied outright, because there's already a new hearing scheduled for the Planning Commission for their April meeting next Monday night, and it will then come back before council a month from now.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, do you have some clarification?
Just on what you can do. I would not take action, even to deny it, because you don't have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, either, you know, agree to pass it without any action, or, you know, table it, whichever you prefer. But don't take any action on it, because you don't have a P&amp;Z recommendation.
And we don't even do the public hearing?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The reason that it's brought before his public hearing is it was advertised. We try to save taxpayer dollars by advertising in the same newspaper article once instead of twice. And it's also more expedient time-wise for the applicants.
Questions? I'll hear a motion to table.
Sure. I'll make the motion to table.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. Motion and second. All those in favor to table. Item number 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six zero. Item number 22. Receive presentation of the Police Department's Racial Profiling Annual Report. Chief Tuttle?
Evening, council. The parish police department is required by the Code of Criminal Procedure to annually report to the local governing body on data that's collected regarding motor vehicle stops in which a ticket or warning was issued and/or arrest made as a result of these stops. This article also directs the comparative analysis of this information be conducted with respect to the number of stops of persons by race or ethnicity, and also the outcome of those encounters, the number of searches conducted, and the result of those searches. Again, this year, the parish police department has retained the services of Dr. Eric Fritz and Dr. Chad Trelson of the Justice Research Consultants out of Denton to do that analysis, to prepare the 2021 racial profiling report, which was recently completed. I have Dr. Fritz here tonight, and I would like to ask him to come up and do a presentation on that report to council.
Thank you, chief. Welcome, Dr. Fritz.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Eric Fritz with Justice Research Consultants, and basically going to talk about the analysis that we performed on your 2021 calendar-year traffic stop data. As the chief mentioned, this is required under our Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. What is commonly just referred to as our Texas Racial Profiling Law. And so, the first thing that we do is make sure that the department is in compliance with the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and our Texas Racial Profiling Law. The law specifies that there are certain elements in which every law enforcement agency in the state must have, such as a policy prohibiting racial profiling. They must provide training to their officers regarding racial profiling. They must have a complaint process, public education about the complaint process, and also, every traffic stop that is conducted, certain data or variables or elements of that traffic stop must be collected by the officer, and then we receive that data and analyze it. And so, based on that, the department is fully in compliance with the law. We then spend most of our time talking about the analysis that is conducted. And as chief mentioned, the analysis is specified by the law. So, the law tells us this is the analysis that needs to be conducted. So, the first analysis, that's the way the presentation is set up. The first analysis is basically, we need to compare the traffic stops by race, ethnicity. And so, in 2021 calendar year, there were about 3,500 traffic stops. And then, as presented on this slide, there is the racial and ethnic background and breakdown of the people that were stopped. And due to the small number of motorists who were of Asian descent and motorists of American Indian descent or Native American descent, we don't include them in the chart, and we don't... we're really not going to talk much because... about those motorists that were stopped, because as the numerator or denominator becomes very small, it becomes problematic with the kind of the volatility of the percentages and stuff. So, the next slide, you'll see, we chart out motorists who are white, black, and Hispanic, and have not charted out those that were Asian and those that were Native American due to their small number compared to the total number of stops. So, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, otherwise just referred to as TECO, specifies some things as well that must be done in a Texas Racial Profiling Report. And so, they've been given the... under law, they've been given the ability to basically identify the reporting format. And so, what data needs to be reported and what format does it need to be reported. And so, they require that the traffic stop comparison by race, ethnicity that you just saw on the prior slide be compared to the agency's population. And we do that in two ways. We compare it to your city population, and we compare it to your county population. And that's what's presented in the bar chart there. So, what it basically says is that 61% of your stops were of white motorists, and 57% of your city population is designated as white. 71% of your county population is designated as white. So, from a comparative standpoint that TECO requires, it basically is saying that white motorists are stopped at a rate that is higher than their percentage in the city population, lower than their percentage in the county population. And then, as we move to black motorists, they are stopped at rates that are higher than their representation in both the city and the county population. And as we move to Hispanics, they are stopped at percentages or rates that are lower than their representation in the city and the county population. There are pretty significant issues with that comparison that was just shown. Again, we're required by TECO. Texas Commission on Law Enforcement requires that. But there's two primary issues from a research methodology standpoint of why that's problematic. Part of it is, is that we're using the census as the benchmark, and we just don't have an adequate benchmark of our driving population. That's what we need. We need a measure of the driving population, and that does not exist. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist in Paris. It just does not exist. And so, there is not an adequate benchmark in which to compare your traffic stop data. We have very good numbers on the traffic stops and the race ethnicity of those people that were stopped. We also have very good numbers on your city and county population, and the racial, ethnic background, but those are two different things. And so, we do not have an adequate measure of the driving population. And so, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement requires census data to be used, but it's an inadequate benchmark, and really, all the benchmarks, and there's probably about eight or nine of them, are inadequate. But probably the bigger issue, from our perspective, as the researchers on this, is that the parish police officers do not know the race ethnicity of the person prior to the stop, almost always. And so, we've been collecting this data in this state under law since 1999. Every traffic stop, the officer has to note, "Did I know the race, ethnicity of the person prior to the stop?" And almost always, the answer is no. And in Paris, in 2021, 2.3% of the stops, the officer knew the race, ethnicity prior to the stop. And that's consistent. We had a graduate student do a master's thesis, pulled the 2015 data, and we're talking about almost 1,200 agencies, 3.25 million traffic stops, and 2.9% of the time for the entire state, did officers know the race, ethnicity of the person prior to stop. I pulled the 2019 data, and it's 3.5% for the state that they know the race, ethnicity prior to stop. Why is that important? Because the... one of the things the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure does is it defines racial profiling. Racial profiling is a law enforcement-initiated action based upon a person's race or ethnicity. And stopping a vehicle is a law enforcement-initiated action. And so, if you don't know the race, ethnicity of the person that you are stopping, you cannot legally believe racially profiling. And so, from a research standpoint, from a report standpoint, and how we assess this, we don't put much interpretive value on the stop data and move away from it and really focus on post-stop outcomes. Whereas, the chief mentioned, required by law to do these comparative analyses, and this is the first of three that will be presented. But there's much more substantive value to the... what we refer to as the post-stop outcomes. So, what happened after the officer stopped the vehicle, got out of the vehicle, approached the vehicle, and then made identification of the subject of the motorists, then that's much more substantive to us from an analytic standpoint. And so, that's what is presented next, are the traffic stop outcomes. And so, when a traffic stop's made, officer basically has four options available to them in Paris. They can give a verbal warning... They can give a verbal warning, written warning, citation, or an arrest. I would say globally, before we start talking race, ethnicity, globally, about seventy-five percent of your traffic stops end in a warning. And so from my perspective, on the outside looking in, coming to Paris once a year, I would characterize that as a very customer service-oriented perspective, because it's not an enforcement perspective of, we're going to cite and provide citations to people that commit traffic infractions, because seventy-five percent of the time, they're receiving a warning. What's presented on this chart, though, and what's required under the law for the comparative analysis of the traffic stop outcomes are what are column percentages. And column percentages have much more value from an interpretation standpoint. And so what this means is that of the white motorists that were stopped, forty-four-point-five percent received a verbal warning. Of the black motorists that were stopped, forty-seven-point-three percent received a verbal warning. And of the Hispanic motorists that were stopped, fifty-point-seven percent received a verbal warning. So it's a column percentage as opposed to a row percentage. This holds a lot more interpretive value, because then we can see, are these percentages kind of hanging together? Are they close to each other, reasonably close to each other? As you can see on the verbal warning side, they definitely are. On the written warning side, they are. And then we have citations, which again, they are relatively few in number in comparison to other jurisdictions that we perform racial profiling analyses for. And then we also look at arrests. And arrests are the same interpretation. So it's of the white motorists that were stopped, seven-point-seven percent were arrested. Of the black motors that were stopped, eleven-point-four percent were arrested. And of the Hispanic motors that were stopped, four-point-two percent were arrested. The... There were only eleven arrests of Hispanic motorists. So when I talked about kind of the volatility or the instability of percentages when you have a small numerator, denominator, that applies to the arrests of Hispanic motorists, since there were just eleven of them overall for the year. But we do have the reason for the arrest. And so the reason for the arrest, most of the time, is an outstanding warrant. So the officer arrests the individual because they have a warrant. Second most common reason is violation of penal code, which basically means that the officer has probable cause to believe that the motorist has committed a violation of the criminal law, and they arrest the individual. And so that accounts, that's over ninety-eight percent. That basically accounts for almost all the arrests that occurred in 2021. The third comparative analysis is required under laws to look at searches. And so again, this is a post-stop outcome, so it has a good value for us from an interpretation, analysis standpoint. Overall, sixteen percent of your traffic stops included a search. So five-hundred-and-forty-seven of the thirty-four-hundred-and-eleven traffic stops involved a search. Most commonly, just jumping down, those searches were either a consent search or a search based upon probable cause. Search based upon probable cause means that the officer has articulable facts or basically evidence to believe that there is evidence connected to crime inside that vehicle or on that person. And so they conduct a probable cause search. The searches percentages is the exact same analysis as we did with the stops. So it's read as, of the white motorists that were stopped, fifteen-point-five percent were searched. Of the black motorists that were stopped, eighteen-point-five percent were searched. And of the Hispanic motorists that were stopped, ten-point-seven percent were searched. And we have a similar issue with the denominator, numerator, with Hispanic motorists, because there were only twenty-eight searches overall. And so that number becomes very volatile when it has a small numerator, in this particular instance. We pay particular attention to consent searches, which is why they're separated out there. Not because they're the most common search in the city of Paris, but because consent searches are referred to as discretionary. And so from a racial profiling standpoint, those are the searches that we typically assess in more in-depth. And so basically, it's a repeat of what was stated before, but forty-six-point-six percent of your searches were consent searches. So that was the largest percentage of searches. And seven-point-five percent of your traffic stops involved consent searches. Now, one other thing that the researchers shown on consent searches is that although it's discretionary and the officer has the ability without what is referred to as any level of proof to request consent to search, usually the officer has suspicion, reasonable suspicion, some facts, some level of evidence to then request the consent to search. The, I think the evidence to show that is on the very last point there, on the contraband discovered. What is referred to as the contraband hit rate. So we're doing this, these five-hundred-and-forty-seven searches, are they producing contraband? And over fifty percent of the time, they are. So most commonly, it's drugs. But that is above the state average, which is forty-five percent. And it's above what is sometimes just referred to as the national average, which is thirty-five percent. It's really not a national average in the sense that all agencies participated, but it's a study that was done on millions and millions of traffic stops, over twenty million traffic stops. So most of the time which officers are conducting a search, they're actually finding evidence of criminal activity and then either arresting that person or providing them with some other action.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Absolutely.
Under the category of searches, where you got it broke down in demographics and percentages, just say the white motorists, fifteen-point-five percent. Does that mean fifteen-point-five percent of the time that you stop, you know, out of all the white motorists stops, that you search them at fifteen percent? Or does it mean that represents fifteen percent of all the stops between white, black, Hispanic, and all?
Just white.
Because last year, it was broke down both ways.
Just white motorists.
Okay.
So it's a column percentage. So of the white motorists that were stopped, fifteen-point-five percent were searched.
Okay.
Yes. And there's better analytic value and better interpretive value for y'all when it's a column percentage. Row percentages aren't all that helpful from a, what does this mean from a racial profiling standpoint? Because then it allows us to see consistency or inconsistency in search practices or in citation arrests, those types of things.
Thank you.
The last analysis that needs to be done, it's not a comparative analysis, but we need to assess complaints. And so in 2021, the Paris Police Department did not receive any complaints alleging that an officer engaged in racial profiling. So that's, the analysis is required under law, and that's what's written up in the report that you have. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I know in your report, I mean, in your, in our packet anyway, it said that you, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong one. Okay, it said the department shows it's fully compliant with all relevant Texas laws concerning racial profiling. My question to you, did you see anything that stood out in these graphs and the statistics that came back?
No, we do about thirty-five agencies. And so I see an awful lot of traffic stop data. And I would say that you're very consistent with what we see within other agencies. And that's regarding, you know, the percentage of time in which you know the race ethnicity prior to stop and search practices. I would say the thing that is the anomaly is that you have a very high percentage of the traffic stop outcome being a warning, which is not a bad thing. It just, to me, it shows a very more customer orientation and an enforcement orientation to traffic enforcement within Paris Police Department.
Right.
Because they're getting warnings instead of citations. And that's, what I would say is the only thing that stuck out, looking at all the reports that we do.
Yeah. So, and like you said, I think the report said ninety-three percent of the time, the officer does not know who it is they're stopping, or the race or ethnicity of the people they're stopping, right? I think that's standard across the state.
Ninety-seven percent is obvious.
Probably standard across the nation. You know, you don't know who it is you're stopping. But when you get down to the categories of written warning, verbal warning, whatever, the officer knows one-hundred percent of the time who it is, you know, the race, ethnicity of the person they stopped. So when you look at the arrests, just take the arrest category. I think you had a presentation of that. When you look at the arrests, after the officer knows who it is they're stopping, the white category was seven-point-seven, the black was eleven-point-four, and the Hispanic was four. Well, to me, that shows that blacks are like almost forty percent more often, more likely to be arrested than whites. And even in the search category, it goes up. And so that's a substantial amount. And then when you look at the overall arrests, two-hundred-and-ninety-one overall arrests, the white represent, the white category represents fifty-three-point-three, black forty-one percent, and then Hispanics one-point-three. Well, when you look at, I'm talking about overall. So when you look at demographics, that doesn't sit well as far as demographics, because fifty-five percent, I mean, this county is made up of like sixty-four percent white, twenty percent black, nine percent Hispanic. So when you see fifty-five percent of white are likely to get searched, and, I mean, arrested, then forty-one percent of blacks, of the overall number, the blacks represent forty-one percent, and then Hispanics one-point-three, to me, that's alarming. That stands out. And I'm basing these on the numbers that was presented here. And then I went back in 2020 and did the same thing, and the numbers jumped out the same way. After, I mean, as far as demographics, it's set almost perfect before you know who it is you're stopping. But then when you get to, after the stop is made, when you know one-hundred percent who it is you're stopping, all of those numbers jump up. And it usually does not favor the black category. They jump up at an alarming rate.
Okay, I'll take two of them, and then I'll ask you to clarify the numbers on the, we were talking about one-point-three and those types of things. But we, in the report, so when we're talking about the arrests specifically, in the report, we note that, trying to get to the correct page, that most of the arrests were based upon outstanding warrants and/or violation of the penal code. And so I perfectly understand what you're saying regarding eleven-point-four percent of the arrests were of black motorists and seven-point-seven percent were of white motorists. And Hispanics, there's volatility just because there were just a handful of arrests. But the differential is explained by disproportionate number of outstanding warrants. And so it's what we refer to as non-discretionary. So the, when someone has an outstanding warrant, an officer is going to make an arrest. And so if, and that occurs more frequently among black motorists who are stopped in the city of Paris. And that's what the data in the table one illustrates is, and so that, so what, this is the first year in which we are required by law, by TECO, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, and by law, to break all this disinformation down by race, ethnicity. But it's also very valuable to us, because it allows us to be able to have answers to things that were previously unknowable, because we didn't have it broken down by race, ethnicity. But the reason for the differential between the arrest rates is because blacks are more likely to have outstanding warrants than whites who are stopped in the city of Paris. And that's not unusual for many cities. And so that explains the arrest side. And then on the...
Yeah, I want to stay on the arrest side. The way you just explained it, you said whites represent seven-point-seven percent of the arrests. But that's not what we, when I asked you that question earlier, it was like, the seven-point-seven would represent how many whites, you know, out of the stop, white stops were arrested, not overall.
Correct.
So whites, when white are stopped, seven-point-seven percent of the time, they're likely to be arrested. And blacks, it goes up to eleven-point-four.
Mm-hmm.
Out of the black stops.
Right, right. Because if we were doing a row percentage, that would have to equate to a hundred percent. It doesn't. So we're doing a column percentage. So that's the difference. I mean, you're accurate in your statement. But, well, it is up. It's, one's eleven-point-five and one's seven-point-seven, so one's larger than the other one.
Well, I know that.
But the explanation for that is, is because of a differential in the number of outstanding arrest warrants.
So you're saying that it's almost standard in Paris, or it's more likely in Paris for a black person, when they're stopped, to have some reason to be arrested?
To be arrested for an outstanding warrant, absolutely.
Outstanding warrant, what you specifically said.
Yes, sir. Yes, I mean, that's what the data shows. And that's not inconsistent with other agencies. Is that when we look at what would be just called the disparity in the arrest rate, is we then ask the question, why does that disparity exist? And in this particular case, the most prominent reason why that disparity exists is because of the greater likelihood of a black motorist being stopped in Paris having an outstanding arrest warrant. But then it's incumbent upon the officer to make an arrest. I mean, they're probably required by policy, but it's, there is a warrant for that person. A judge has said, find that person, take him into custody, and bring him to me. And that's what a warrant is. So they don't really have a lot of options at that point in time to ignore the warrant.
Yeah, I just knew that it was alarming, that it jumped up. Now, the reason why, we didn't have those statistics, you know, that a black is more likely to have a warrant for his arrest. But if it is, it is. But I just knew that that jumped up for a reason.
In the outstanding warrants.
Yes.
Yes. And we used to not know that, because all of this data used to not be broken down by race, ethnicity, because the law didn't require it. Now it does. And then on the, I know you asked about searches as well. The, I mean, from white motorists to black motors, we're talking about a three-percentage point differential. Fifteen-point-five percent of white motorists were searched, and eighteen-point-five percent of black motorists were searched. And the differential of why black motorists were searched at a higher percentage is actually probable cause. The officer had probable cause to believe that there's evidence connected to crime in the vehicle, because it's not consent, because it's talked about in the report, that among consent searches, white motorists were searched based on consent in fifty-one-point-four percent of all searches of white motorists. Black motorists were searched based on consent in thirty-six-point-five percent of all searches of black motorists. So the higher differential there is not due to consent, it's due to probable cause.
Okay.
And that's what the value of these numbers gives us then, an explanation rather than just seeing a disparity. Because seeing a disparity is just a difference. It's then the question is, why does that difference exist?
Yeah, and that was my question, why? Because I don't have that information.
Outstanding warrants on the arrest side, and searches based upon probable cause on the search side, pertaining specifically to black motorists.
That information's on page nine of that report, in our packet there.
Okay.
On that graph, on the arrest, the base arrests.
And then I wasn't quite sure on that talk, the discussion you were having about, because I always say I can only hold two things with my head at once, so I answered two things. About the one-point-three percent, I want to make sure that...
Oh, that represented the Hispanic category. Yeah, I think you answered the question.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, sir.
I'd just like to comment on the arrest warrants. That can be, it's not a criminal thing. It may be they got a code enforcement ticket and haven't resolved it, didn't show up for court, that sort of thing. Unpaid traffic tickets, that sort of thing. And we see a lot of that on the reports that Ms. Harris sends us from code enforcement, arrest warrants issued. Any other discussions or questions of Dr. Fritz? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Y'all have a great evening.
You have a safe trip.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Y'all take care.
Item number twenty-three, discuss and act on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Paris, Texas, amending Article six-point-zero-two Fire Department of Chapter Six of the Code of Ordinances to add a new section, six-point-zero-two-point-zero-zero-five. to add a new section, 6.02.005, assignment pay and to renumber the remaining sections of Article 6.02 as appropriate. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Tonight, we're bringing before you a request to create an ordinance authorizing assignment pay in the Fire Department. The Fire Marshal, the Hazardous Materials Response Team, and the Dive Team are all currently receiving assignment pay by approval of previous councils. The Hazardous Materials Response Team and the Dive Team were approved for assignment pay back in June of 2014 at a council meeting. And the Fire Marshal has been receiving this pay since the separation of the Assistant Fire Chief and the Fire Marshal's positions back in October of 2015. And even though these were approved by city councils, none were put in place by ordinance as required by civil service. That was just an error through our administration back then. And we need to rectify that and put that in place properly in accordance with civil service. We're also asking that you grant assignment pay for the new Assistant Fire Marshal's position as well in order to compensate for all the special training and duties that this person occupying this position is going to have to accomplish. We respectfully request that the ordinance be created encompassing the assignment pay for the existing positions as well as for the new Assistant Fire Marshal's position. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any, seeing no questions, I'll hear a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to create the ordinance to reflect pay already established with the addition of the requested assignment pay for the Assistant Fire Marshal's position.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries six to zero. Item number 24. Convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorney to receive legal advice from the city attorney about (1) pending or contemplating litigation and/or (2) on matters in which the duty of an attorney to a client under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct at the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with this chapter to wed the Belfort Apartments. Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code. (1) To discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. (2) To deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect described by subdivision 1 as follows. Retail development. The time is 7:02 and the City Council will now convene into executive session. Item number 25. Reconvene into open session and possibly take action on those matters discussed in executive session. The time is 7:52 PM and the City Council is now in open session. There is no action needed to be taken. Item number 26. Consider and approve future events for City Council and/or City staff pursuant to Resolution Number 2004-081. Anyone have anything? All right. I'll hear a motion in a second for adjournment.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, unanimous. Don't get your fingers in the water.